You will not get them either. Oh, I'm not getting one that says help president. Yes. As long as you commit to a three-year term. Uh, uh, Jeremiah has. Nine years.
Nine.
It's not offending you. Actually, at least half of my.
That's true.
That was, okay. By all accounts. I got the other one. By that clock. How much do you have to pay for that song? Yeah.
Very nice. Ours.
Oh.
God never been. No.
Okay, it is now five o'clock and I'm going to call this meeting for February twenty eighth. Order, if we could please stand with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this law of liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Irvin?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Morton?
I am here as well.
Have a really fun night tonight because we're celebrating some students and then we get to hear from other ones about what they are doing at school. So we'll begin with Mrs. Booth.
Right up to the front.
Oh, all the way to the front, okay.
We want Alicia there.
Alicia, she'll come up with her, please.
So, um, we were very excited this year that, um, Alicia was accepted to the All-State Band for the Ohio Music Educators Association. It's been since two thousand seventeen that we've had a student in that group and he is the first flute student in my thirty-three years of being here at Defiance that was accepted, so.
Is it exciting since maybe you like the flute?
Maybe. He has taken lessons with me off and on through the, since that eighth grade, yeah, really, so. And part of the process for, for what he has to, students have to do to apply for this group, they have to perform, uh, record a solo, um, that is at the level of doing, uh, Class A or Class B at solo and ensemble. And so that's a level piece that takes two or three months to get prepared for that. Then he has to do two etudes, um, that are just as difficult and take another two to three months to prepare. So in, in essence, it's about six months of working on materials to make those recordings and then you send them in. Um, there were over twelve hundred students that applied for the band. Ten flute students were accepted. I don't know exactly how many flute students actually applied, but he was third chair out of the ten flute students that, that were accepted.
Outstanding.
It's a fantastic job.
Thank you so much.
We should have had you bring your flute.
Next, next me.
And we're also going to, um, have our swim coach introduce Gabby Rittenhour to us.
Let me go to the front as well, too, Lisa. Well, Gabby, come on up here. So Gabby Rittenhour, uh, third-year diving athlete. Narrowly missed, um, getting out of districts in the state last year. But put on a really good showing this year with a, with a PR at the district meet. The kind of, as the, the sports writers and the Crescent News always say, punched her ticket to get to state. So she ended up finishing thirteenth out of thirty-two. And on the ride over, we were talking about what's the worst possible outcome? That she'd be thirty-second in the state of Ohio. So she came in and after five dives, they cut the thirty-two field down to twenty. And then after three more dives, they cut the twenty field down to the final sixteen. So she was able to finish thirteenth in the state, uh, which is a fantastic accomplishment. And just, and if we just say the Northwest District, we took twelve of the thirty-two divers. And of those twelve, ten finished in the top sixteen.
Fantastic.
So Gabby is amongst the elite in the state, something to be super proud of. And I was actually kind of looking at her scores today and just kind of seeing how they accumulated, right? How they grew throughout the season, so. She did a fantastic job. Kind of one of those, I'm not gonna say rare. Because in the sport of diving, you have smacks and a lot of times that may leave a welt because you're hitting the water, uh, in a way that you don't want to hit the water. And she'll basically just jump up and say, "Thank you, sir. Can I have another?" So, yeah.
So at this time, I would like to have a motion to, um, pass resolution to acknowledge Alicia and, and Gabby on their accomplishments.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
All right, now it's fun time. You get to come back up and get presented with the resolution from the Board of Education.
Actually, you're gonna come to me.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm not fighting through the crowd.
Yeah, that's even better for the background. Just move your red coat out of the way, Gabby. And then I don't have to. Why don't you say it on each side of her?
Okay, so Alicia. With this passed resolution to acknowledge your awesome achievements, congratulations on behalf of our board. By me, I am Shagad. Gabby, I understand your call, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We have passed a resolution for you as well, for acknowledging your achievement. That's awesome as well. Congratulations. So thank you both for representing.
Before we get to our next, uh, presentation, Mrs. Davis, I think, I heard you utter it. Now you have fine young people that represent your, your school district. They represent their, uh, school, their families and the entire community very well. And we're exceptionally proud of your accomplishments, so keep up the great work. Never forget where you're from. Just never forget where you're from. It's a great place to be from and be proud of. Congratulations.
Okay, so let's move on to our middle schoolers.
Mr. Carr.
All right.
Bring him up.
And Rittenhours and Hernanes, if you would like to depart, you're more than welcome to it this time. You do not have to stay.
But thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Jeremiah, you gotta say, Jeremiah, you have to.
I gotta say.
All right, uh, we have, we brought up, um, invited today some of our Beyond the Bell students. First off, we have our two Beyond the Bell coordinators. We have, uh, Mrs. Frank, Mrs. Mary Frank down there and Mrs. Melissa Barnhart right here. I'm not gonna get into a whole lot. Um, I'll introduce to, uh, the students that we have and then they'll let in some detail about what, what happens with Beyond the Bell. We have Isaac Dodd.
Hello.
He was an eighth grade student. Evan Hammett.
Hello.
Who's an eighth grade student. Ryan Hammett.
Hello.
An eighth grade student. And then Cash Martinico, who is a seventh grade student. Okay, so I'm gonna kind of let them do their, uh, they create their presentation and we'll kind of talk about Beyond the Bell, uh, which is our after-school program.
All right, gentlemen, you do not have to read that. You can face them and just talk if you want. But you just have to, uh, give them a little bit about what you like about Beyond the Bell. So if you want to go in order, Isaac, you want to start?
Okay, so basically, the reason why I like Beyond the Bell, I didn't put much here because I couldn't think of much, but now I can. Beyond the Bell, a really good place to like make friends. I made like a lot of friends while being at Beyond the Bell. The field trips are really fun. I've gotten like a lot of work done in here, like times that saved my butt from bad days. Uh, but yeah, I just think it's a really good place to be, like make friends and plus we have like people that come in. And like, we had, uh, some lady come in with rocks, with like, with fossil rocks. Uh, how long ago was that, like previous year then? And then we had a librarian come in with books and all that. Uh, but it's a really good place to be and you can learn a lot. I've learned a lot, like once to find out a zoo, I'd never do that. But yeah, I just think it's a really good place to make friends and give your grades up, definitely.
Oh, that's great.
Evan, you can either read what you want or you can just speak to them, either way you want to.
Hi, my name is Evan Hammett. Uh, one thing I like about Beyond the Bell is that when I, when I have homework that I have, I get to do it, so I get to work my, so I get to save my butt. To really prevent myself from getting negative grades.
Oh, you're a calculator, so.
Do you want to talk about bowling grain or not? You already know.
I went to a BGSU. So it has passing grades. I went bowling in offline.
Good, cool.
Ryan, Ryan, you're next. Can you read what you have or just tell me like about Beyond the Bell?
My name is Ryan Hammett and one thing I like about Beyond the Bell is most of the times some people, some people can make friends and some people can't. So I would say Beyond the Bell is like the perfect place to make friends and just be social. Another thing is homework. That, that's a real struggle in life. Some people can't finish their homework on time. Well, with Beyond the Bell, that can actually, that can help out a lot and it can make a really great change in their grades. And another thing is the trips, though, those are really fun. They normally have limits to them, so like let's say you have no missing work, you're, you'll be able to go to the trips. And if you have no, uh, or missing work. And another thing is you can just, you can, you can have fun, like some people come in and out from, from like other people. So like, let's say, one, one person, um, came in from, from Beyond the Bell. Um, they were, they were talking about like feathers and which feathers are from this certain type of animal. So that's why I like Beyond the Bell the most.
Does she want to ask on Cash?
My name is Cash Martinico and I like Beyond the Bell because I feel to see all the teachers or feel to see all my friends. And I have the trips I need to take. Like we go to, we can, we can go to, we went to the YMCA. If you didn't have any missing homework, you could go, you could go do the stuff instead. And if you did have missing homework, you had to go to a work room. I didn't go do it with the BGSU because I have good grades and passing grades. And I also didn't have, and I was also doing really good at Beyond the Bell. I enjoy Beyond the Bell just because I get to see everyone.
So I heard every one of you talk about how it helps you with school and, right? So besides Mrs. Barnhart and Mrs. Frank, are there other teachers there?
Yeah, there are.
Yes.
There is, uh, Mr. Adley, there is, uh.
Crow.
It's a crow.
Yeah.
So there are a lot of your teachers that spend, maybe not every day, but they come certain days, right?
Yeah.
And they kind of rotate through and if maybe you need a little help with math, there might be a math teacher there that day. Or, or if Mrs. Donspock might teach you a little singing lesson or one along, something along those lines, right? Martinico, you look like a singer. Are you a singer?
I used to be.
All right, all right. Used to be, gave it up, all right.
I, I could have sang choir.
All right. No, I just wanted to bring that up and I know this is in the presentation that, that I gave you all a copy of. But if you look there, you have high school and middle school teachers there. Uh, you have support staff that stay involved in it. You know, transportation, cafeteria, tackle people are all part of it. So, uh, it's a big operation and Mary and Melissa, I think what would be important for them to know is, tell them how is, what is Beyond the Bell beyond just what our kids do here at school? What, what really is it and, and how do we get involved in it?
So Twenty-First Century Grant, we applied to the ESC. Uh, we had it previously, then we had a year, our five years was up. We didn't have it last year, so this is our second round of five years. We're in year one of five years of it again, so.
Hey, you, go ahead. How long are they aft, school, after school? I mean, is it from three to?
Two hours.
Three to five, basically?
Yeah, no, two, two forty-five to five.
To five?
Oh, no, two forty-five to two.
Two forty-five to four.
Two forty-five to four, to two forty.
Four forty.
Four thirty.
Maybe we ought to extend it to five, Mr. Parker.
So when it's over, how did you, how did you all go home?
Uh, there's either car riders or like, well, we'll go out, meet their parents and all like, because all their parents know like when we come. And there's three bus. Yeah, there's buses, A, B, and C, uh, each, uh, takes us to like a certain area around Defiance. It's like, the Defiance is like big, but it's not like, okay, so we're gonna need three buses, like one area, like my bus is B. So like goes over to the, uh, New Marathon area, like the trailer park, that type of area. And I don't know where all the rest go, but yeah, that's basically how we get home. And we usually get home around like, uh, I want to say like four fifty, maybe like around five.
But some buses will get home later than like five thirty.
So, so after school, I was always hungry. Do you guys get snacks or anything at this?
Uh, before, before we can separate the groups, they give us snacks.
Okay.
Uh.
Are they good snacks?
That's why we're smiling on this.
That's why I'm asking, man.
Okay, so I'll be honest, the cafeteria doesn't give us that good snack.
And one thing, and one thing too, and then I'll chime in. Um, Beyond the Bell, Twenty-First Century Grant, we actually cannot purchase snacks and food out of that. So actually the district, you guys have been generous enough to help provide snacks for, uh, for those kids that stay at Beyond the Bell. So that's provided by the district then, um, to help support the Beyond the Bell program.
So we're the ones that give the bad snacks?
Yeah.
You said yourself. You said yourself, wasn't it?
Do you go to this every day?
Yes.
Yeah.
We make it in years. Yeah, except for Fridays. Like in the beginning, like when we were signing up, they gave us a form for like, uh, we're gonna be on there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, but we don't do Fridays because the teachers need a break from us.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, so we can go when we want and we can go when we don't want to.
But sometimes when we have like, when like President Day came over, um, Tuesday we're gonna go because they want like, can you break from us? From Beyond the Bell?
We're that bad. I'm joking, I'm joking.
They have a staff need.
Yeah, staff, yeah, staff. And that, they, they do that like every time after like, after like break.
This, this grant is different. We have to run a hundred percent elementary, to run a hundred hours in the summer. So that's why we didn't have it that night. We were planning for a hundred hours of summer program.
So you, it's extended beyond the school year as well?
Yeah, it is.
We'll do some fun stuff from the sun. How much you improve your grades?
Oh, I, for, for when I first went to Beyond the Bell, I improved my grades a lot because my grades went from Fs, from an F to Ds to As.
Really?
That's awesome.
Great job.
My, my grades improved from like, so I had a D, Ds and one F. Those improved to B, A, and, and C.
Nice.
Uh, my grades have definitely helped, except for math. Miss Long is just a super good math teacher. It's really good. I'm not gonna lie.
That's one of the, that's one of the points tomorrow.
That's one of the points tomorrow.
No, but it definitely helped my grades and, yeah, Miss Long is a really good math teacher.
How many total students do you serve, ladies?
Oh.
Oh, ladies, you know?
I know.
There used to be like, what, fifty, forty some kids?
We, we started out pretty large with about fifty and then.
And then some kids split.
It's kind of dwindling down to between twenty and thirty now. We're gonna.
Pretty consistent though with the numbers you get.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna actually try to get more students involved.
Okay, good.
I know the little story.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Barnhart, Mr. Frank, or any of our, uh, young presenters?
What movie did y'all go to?
Uh, The Polaris.
What is it?
Polaris.
Oh, yeah, 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 good, good.
I looked fifteen minutes plus or two ago.
I, I, I have like.
So are you at Beyond the Bell right now?
Uh, yeah, we just.
We just got out.
Yeah, what happened was that after Beyond the Bell, we just stayed behind and our parents were gonna come pick us up.
Awesome. Fantastic. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it, man. Thank you. Thanks, Melissa. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you for having us.
I made a good job.
Very sociable.
Yes, they were enjoying them. They even talked my language.
Yeah, they moved here two years ago.
Yeah, I didn't have that one. I had Cash.
So they moved here when they were six years.
Okay, so we don't have any, uh, public comments, I don't believe, tonight?
They left it. Is it six, three, eight, Omer?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
We have a second.
And then a separate one for the elementary.
We have a separate one.
Ours is called the dog house. Stuff could sound all that positive.
Don't ruin it because you could probably bring some kid.
There you go. Okay, uh, we're, we are going to move on with, um, Mrs. Switzer's report.
Hi, um, all of you have access to the financial reports in January twenty twenty-four. Does anyone have any questions regarding those reports? Here are none. I'll move on. Uh, we have budget objectives, um, for prom and second grade camp. Those are attached there for you. Is there any questions regarding those two budget objectives? Those will be the consent agenda for the full bill. Moving on, um, we have the Fifty-Year Twenty-Five Northwest Ohio ESC program costs. Um, if you click on that, you can see the contract that's attached in the public content, um, under executive contact. There's a summary sheet of services. That bill, as you can see, went up, um, four point five percent increase over what we're currently paying this year. That may change because we have a final billing and it's mostly based on, um, student attendance. Right now, we have a high attendance at the, um, IEC Center. And Mr. Morton can explain more on that if you like.
Does anybody have any questions or views from me? So the Independence Education Center is a, um, standalone facility that houses students that are on an IP for behavior issues, uh, emotionally disturbed children. And we had, um, as many as seven children move into the school district that had always attended that. Uh, and, uh, the cost of annually at the Independence Education Center is between thirty-three and thirty-six thousand dollars annually. So when you have people move in and remember when you're looking at a, an IEP, an individualized education plan, that is considered their least restrictive environment and that is a, a legal document that requires them to attend that. When they move into your district, then that is their least restrictive environment. That's where they go to school. We get the bill for it. One of the things that we try and do, because I think our administrators put an honest effort into, is that we go out and observe the children, we have meetings, and if there's a way for us to transition the children back to our school building, we do that. There are some cases we're successful with that and there are some cases we are not successful with that. Uh, but that's what we look at and that's when you see the significant change and increase from last year to this year and even this year to the next year, so. Did I explain that correctly, Mrs. Switzer?
Thank you. That's mostly where this increase came from, um, outside of some adjustments for salary benefits.
Correct. They have to pay their people and they have contracts, so they have to follow those.
Does anyone have any additional questions? I'm gonna see bill for myself and Mr. Morton. Um, last thing I have on the discussion items is, is that time of year again, the tax rate resolution. Um, this is a resolution, um, that we, um, that the board can approve that basically agrees with the rates that the county auditor has come up for collection of, um, our levies. So, um, our bond retirement fund, our emergency levy, um, all or adjustable, um, millage levies because they pay a fixed amount of money, um, according to the bond schedule or according to the amount approved when originally passed. So, um, the bond retirement fund used to be about, um, four and a half mils and that is down to three point seven mils because I'm sure all of you that live in Defiance have received your tax bill by now and have noticed a significant increase in valuation. Um, overall for the district, that was about twenty-nine percent. So you'll see as valuation goes up, millage goes down because you need less millage to collect the same amount of money as you did the higher millage because the valuations are higher. Um, the emergency levy went from five point four to four point three five. Um, so that was a significant decrease, but again, it's not a decrease in collection, it's a decrease in the millions needed to collect. Just a reminder, um, and I'm sure all of you are just anxiously awaiting by your forecast in May. We are still the twenty mil floor. We are predicted to be at the twenty mil floor all the way through the forecast, which means that residential and agricultural, um, properties are not paying beyond the twenty mil floor. So, um, what people were paying last year for twenty mils are paying this year for twenty mils. Um, the change in valuation comes for four inside mills, which are put against that floor and commercial industrial properties, so, which pay as the effective, not, they're not rolled back to the floor. So. That is all I have. If no one has any questions, off to the.
I'm looking at your action items and I have a four-one and a four-two saying the same thing. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
The first one, yeah, report. I think it just did. All of ours dropped down. Mine actually did it when I was sitting here, yeah. I think it's not too, because. So the very first one is the report that should have been in the discussion, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve four point one financials from January twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
And we have, uh, now four-three.
One-two is the ESC.
Okay, so we're gonna make that four-two.
I'll move on.
That's what mine, that's just what mine says.
Oh, no, I know. So just showing what we all have.
Okay, we have a motion from Chris.
I'll second that.
For four-two and second by.
I just fixed it on all of yours if you were to pressure for me.
So motion by Chris, second by.
Wesley. Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
And if we could have, uh, motion to approve the tax rate resolution, four point three?
Make a motion to approve four point three.
Second. Charlie, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Irvin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Thank you. Is it fixed now?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Morton, move to you.
Got a, it's a busy time of year as we head into spring. Tomorrow night, the, uh, high school, um, theater department will put on newsies. I watched a little preview today, as did the entire elementary school in two separate shifts. Outstanding, uh, the little forty-minute preview I got today. And as a reminder, uh, your courtesy cart does get you into the school musical. Um, I recommend it's, uh, playing Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So take a guest with you and, and get over and watch, uh, kids, they start rehearsing for this in November and they've been working their tails off all winter, uh, and they'll put on a good show by the end of, and probably by Saturday, they'll all have sore throats and colds and, uh, they'll, they'll, the show must go on, but they'll do, they do a great job. Uh, kindergarten registration begins here, uh, Friday.
Friday?
Friday, yeah. So that starts and, uh, we registering new kindergarteners and hopefully there's a whole bunch of them. That's a good problem to have. Uh, March tenth is daylight savings time. We're back here on the thirteenth. And, uh, our Vane Inquirer put on a, uh, uh, night of music at the elementary school. Uh, end of the third quarter is approaching. Um, then you have your primary election on March nineteenth. Uh, the twenty through the twentieth through the thirtieth, we have Spanish, uh, students. If you recall, Ms. Gibson brought in and you approved, uh, international travel. Uh, they're heading to Costa Rica. Our baseball team is traveling to Florida over spring break. Uh, and then while, while the rest of us probably are enjoying the cold weather. And then while, while the rest of us probably are enjoying the cold weather, Good Friday, Easter. And as a reminder, solar eclipse is April the 8th. There's no school for students that is a faculty and staff in service and work day. And you're back here on April 10th, and before you know it, we plan for graduation. So, okay? Any questions on the upcoming dates?
How many students are going to Costa Rica?
Eight?
Yeah, might be up to 10, yeah, make it 10.
I know that they were working, some kids kind of came in late after the initial meeting. They had a meeting the other night, and I just happened to let a couple people in, and it was their first meeting they had attended, so. We'll, we'll find out. We'll let you know tomorrow for sure. Okay? Any further questions? 5-2, the 24-25 school calendar is presented in front of you. You will see that that is an action item as well in the consent agenda. Worked with the association and reviewed too many calendars this year with, with Miss Long. And, but it's a, it's a good laborious process to go through and figure out what's worked best. We have to work with the business office, taking into consideration our classified staff, workdays, hours, et cetera. So I'm asking that you approve the calendar that is presented to you this evening. Any questions on the 24-25 school calendar? Okay, administrative portion, Mrs. Davis?
As much as, and you can expect in the future, I will ask you to get up and give us your reports, okay? So be prepared for that. But this evening, we're going to forego that, okay? Because we were recognizing and enjoying our students, so no offense, you're important, but we really like them. Does anybody have any questions on the admin reports that we received? We do appreciate the time that you put in to do that. Nobody has any questions? What's your lucky day? We'll, we'll let you go then. We've got to run.
Just remember, she said you're giving your reports in the future.
I like to hear them, okay?
Have good.
You too.
Could you have one action item for you, Miss Davis?
Prime School Foundation trustee, to the starter.
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Star, the admin foundation board.
Now there's the three return, right?
Correct. First three return.
Right. You'll have roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Irvin.
Yes.
Mr. Moats.
Yes.
Mr. Wong.
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Now that's going to take us into our consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or that they need to ask at this time before we move forward? If not, I'll change a motion to approve our consent agenda 7-1 through 7-6.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have roll call.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Wong.
Next name.
Mrs. Irvin.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Moats.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes. That motion was approved. And we will now go into old business. Does anybody have an old business they wish to bring up? None? Chris is thinking. Got nothing?
Uh, no, no. I checked my list. Do not have anything.
Okay, what about new business? None?
No.
Okay, we do have a need for an executive session tonight. Purpose of that would be for number two, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, et cetera, et cetera, competitive bidding. And then number five matters that are required to be kept confidential by federal law. Can I have a motion, please, to go into exec session?
I wish to have an executive session for those purposes. I'll second.
And we will be in executive session at 5:32 PM.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Moats.
Yes.
Mrs. Irvin.
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Wong.